Judge. Okay, the first order of business is the election of officers for the 2023 year. Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. And we have reports from Nathan.
All right, good evening, everybody. First, very briefly, an update on the highway garage roof project here. Spoken with Ton and Blank, Luminot, and Kevin. Our architect, Matt Iretten, expects to send me a standard small projects contract by the end of this week. I will get it to Kevin. If he's okay with it, I will get it to the Board of Commissioners and Ton and Blank for all of your review and either at the next meeting this month or first meeting of February, have that to you so that we can move forward. Moving on to the work release facility, as you know, lowest bid from Gibson Lewis came in at one million five hundred, fifty-three thousand, I'm sorry, one million fifty-three thousand eight hundred dollars, higher than we had hoped, but not substantially greater than where the bids had come in when we included the facility as a bid alternate on the larger Justice Center project in early 2021. Per request last month, I did take a look at the Indiana Code sections relevant to public works construction projects, and unfortunately, none of the alternate processes for performing projects of this, of any sort of magnitude apply to our situation. There's one that could have been done differently that probably wouldn't have resulted in any different costs if we had started earlier, where the construction company managing it would also have been the designer. But for anything where we could have done some of our own self-performed labor, it would have to have been a much, much, much smaller project. County's options then are to accept this lowest bid or to reject all the bids and then to decide whether to put it out for rebid or not. And if we did decide not, just to let it rest, that would be somewhere around sixty thousand dollars expended, not counting my time and sheriff's office time. Based on the breakdown of the cost that Gibson Lewis provided to me and the architect, it's not clear that there are any line items that could, where we could recognize any significant savings. And that is because most of the big-ticket items in that are mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, just because there is not a lot of infrastructure in the basement currently. It's possible that if we were to rebid it, a local contractor might come in lower, maybe especially on the labor side. Don't know if that would be the case or not, and as you know, although one local contractor had expressed interest in it, none of them bid on the project. Of course, even if you do accept the slowest bid and want to move forward, it comes down to whether the council's willing to appropriate the funds or not. We have about two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, give or take, in the cumulative jail fund. That is a highly restricted fund that can only be used for projects like this that involve construction, repairs, maintenance of a jail or related structure. So that is a pretty obvious fit. But that's all. So only about twenty-two percent, give or take, of the project cost, depending on where the final costs would come in after we saw how it wrapped up and how much contingency they didn't touch. I presume if the council did approve it, so as to avoid adversely affecting the county's day-to-day operational funds, they would probably look at rainy day, which has nine-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand dollars in it, give or take, and which they just recently adopted an ordinance regarding so as to establish that fund's primary purpose as maintenance and improvements to county-owned real property. Like I said last month, you have until early February before you are required to make a decision based on the Indiana Code, so you don't have to make any, take any steps tonight, but that's where things stand.
I guess I would comment about using rainy day fund for new construction. To me, a rainy day fund is for emergency situations. I know you can use it for this, but I think a priority that I would see would be to, you know, rainy day has a, given in its term, there are issues that you're unable to handle, whether it be a shortfall in some other area or emergency situation, so.
No, I don't think you're wrong. I just know that, like, the council, that's the first thing they put in that ordinance is for this sort of thing, and what it's worth. I don't think we've touched that fund in five or six years, and the last influx in it was actually from when the state cleared out our, what they called the trust fund. I don't, and Laura may know a little bit about this, I don't understand all the mechanics, but it used to be the case that the state, like, if we had excess income tax revenue, they put it in there, and at one point, they decided the county highway got the great bulk of it, and then the rest of it, the council put in rainy day at that. They spent a little bit on, I think, healthcare insurance or some form of insurance that year. Haven't touched it yet. I, I agree, it's a rainy day fund, save it for rainy day, but that is how the council prioritized in the ordinance, and it is the one way we could move forward without hitting our normal fund. We'd just be down to a hundred and thirty, give or take, left for actual emergencies.
Well, the bid in itself is in excess, and we're not a rich county by any means. Anybody else got comments?
Yeah, I'd make it kind of simple. I just made a motion. Deal with it later.
Moved and seconded. Sixty thousand, is that just for design?
Design costs? And MEP consulting for the design costs?
So that design could still be used?
Yeah.
Down the road?
Yes. So at this point, do you want to hold off on rebidding or do it as soon as the law allows?
Question?
So if rejecting all these bids now, do you want to hold off to an undetermined time to rebid it, or do it as soon as the state law allows?
I kind of think we hold off until we see some financial growth in the county, basically. Any other discussion? So all in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. And we're not against the program.
No.
It, it has nothing to do with
I, I understand.
The decision.
I think it's a worthwhile program, but if anyone's going to be upset, it's going to be Chris before me. I'm just, I'm just running the project. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'll report that back to our bidder and to our architects and move on. Quickly, on the Justice Center and courthouse then. Those last five doors did arrive and were installed the day that I had informed you. I've heard no concerns until the judge informed me that some related things with communication still need to be addressed, but the door installation itself went smoothly. The last one is expected to arrive with the door subcontractor in Valpo next week. And once they do a little bit of shop work, they will let me know and install that, and all the costs for that have been covered by the insurance company's check to the door company. So no more paperwork, no more bills on the doors. With the holidays, I haven't gotten any further correspondence on the Costa noise issue, but just before Christmas, the MEP consultants did remote in and make some adjustments. Talked to the contractor, and she said that it did not make any discernible difference. So the door, or the HVAC subcontractor submitted a request for information, and the MEP consultants did provide an alternate solution that would be more invasive, but that has not received a response yet in terms of what they think it might cost, timeline, that sort of thing. So I'll be connecting with the ADOD this evening or tomorrow to get that ball rolling. Really? Really need to remind them, they should let the project representative know that that's happening, but thank you. So they might be coming out and fixing it without having told me. Okay. Courthouse, it is my intention to submit the last feedback on space assignments and preliminary furniture planning to the architects by the close of business on Friday so that we can get this moving forward and get it out of the swamp it sort of found itself in. In December, I had asked you about fire suppression. Chuck and I have exchanged a few emails about that matter since. My understanding is that the preferred option is to install extinguishers and an alarm system, potentially one that is monitored twenty-four-seven, but to forego a sprinkler system because of issues about false alarms, damage to equipment and files, that sort of thing. I did confirm that fire extinguishers are a separate budget line item, so they would not be affected regardless of your decision on this. But I did want to confirm that extinguishers, alarms, no sprinklers is the board's preference, or if that is not the case, to make sure we have an answer.
I think also, didn't the construction manager kind of agree with this as well?
The architect.
Architect, yes.
Construction managers tried to stay out of that, but the architect didn't think, given the retrofitting and lack of requirement and given the risks that, I mean, obviously, if you want, you can have the sprinkler systems, there are benefits, but there are risks, especially in a building, a lot of electronics and files. Obviously, you'd like to save those, but human safety is the top priority. Those are just going to get a sweat when we're running out of the building.
And I did talk to the insurance company as well, as far as any difference in the two systems, seeing any substantial change in premium. And he said, no. He said, actually, he has more claims on a sprinkler system freezing up or malfunctioning, causing damage than he does on fires. So I think we go with one suggestion here. Any other comments?
Sounds good to me. We need, I do need input on one more courthouse-related matter. I had emailed you and Larry and Tammy in Maintenance about this issue. There is, there's a plan for a generator to be installed in the small utility yard that will be at the southwest side of the courthouse. They had asked if the county had a preference between diesel and natural gas. Larry had commented that we currently have one diesel generator and three gas generators. Service contract is substantially higher on the diesel generators. Chuck, you had asked if LP was a potential alternative. Matt did not think on a project of this size that LP would be advisable. So the, Matt, you know, Larry also said he thought that a generator right-sized just to back up the most critical equipment, whatever that may end up being, would be most important rather than one to back up the entire building. That's just going to be a matter of cost for how much fuel it's going to need and the size and the initial cost. But I wanted to see what the board's thoughts on that are, now that I've gotten you a little more information. You have a preference between the NG and the diesel, knowing what Larry has said?
If one's any more efficient than the other, would you think, Mike?
A lot of them will run on both. Diesel and natural gas. They just don't get as much power out of the natural gas. So they just switch it over from one gas to another.
Can, can we get back with you?
Yeah, yeah.
How about we do that?
Ideally, if we can have it by the next meeting, that would be helpful, so they, but, yes.
I didn't know whether fumes is an issue as well, natural gas burn.
I think Laura can attest that diesel can be an issue from some of the experience they had with heavy equipment outside their office during the courthouse project. I don't know when it's in one stationary position and only running when we need it, if it's going to be the same issue that, you know, earth-moving equipment was, but the fumes were certainly an issue for courthouse occupants when we had heavy equipment. I don't know where the natural gas, what they're, they're back. Yeah, if, I will check in with Larry about where those are, see if he has any further insights, and if do your own digging, talk to everyone too, and if in two weeks, we can hope to have that addressed, that would be great.
All right, yeah. We'll do some research and get back.
All right, last thing I have for you is ARP funds. And I say this not knowing exactly what the process is, what role the council may need for ARP funds as opposed to normal county operating funds, but and that's why Wendy is here tonight with me and Kurt as well, thinking. Our broadband task force is asking that the commissioners consider allocating up to fifty thousand dollars for us to hire, either directly or by an RFP or RFQ process, as you may prefer, a qualified engineering firm to develop a broadband plan for the county. This would be a coherent, publicly accessible plan that would outline steps that we need to continue taking as a broadband council and task force, as in a county and in my office, as well as a comprehensive map of the county, highlighting target areas based on phasing by need and possibility, issues with right-of-way access, so that when a developer might come in, want to access, dig, you know, trench or bore our rights away to install, they're going in the places on, or even if as minor detail as which side of the road highway thinks is better, that sort of thing. You know, the consultant that the foundation has hired to guide us, this has been working on some of the teaching planning component, but a plan of this scale is more than he or we could take on. Many months ago, we sort of talked about this idea, and it sort of fell by the wayside, but I recently had a conversation with Vernon Gillum from the State Park and leadership from Lightstream, and we're actually having a similar conversation with Vernon and RTC later this week about the possibility of piggybacking on the Towne O'Winnamax utility project to the State Park to get fiber in the ground then, so we wouldn't potentially see two disruptions to them. And what I learned from the leadership at Lightstream that they were explaining based on their own lessons learned is that whether it's RTC, Lightstream, a partnership between the two of them, or somebody else, if somebody builds out to that site or to any location and hasn't made themselves aware enough of longer-term projects, expectations, hopes for the county's broadband network, and they don't build sufficient capacity, what ends up happening, and what we would actually probably see here if we get to the point where one of them is building out there, is that they have to go back not to wherever they've just ended development, but to a previous date and tear up everybody's yard, sidewalk, streets a second or third time to run more cable in because they didn't expect they would have a reason to meet certain capacity level. Now, obviously, there is an extent to which individual providers should be doing this, but it helps to give the county some leverage if we have a comprehensive plan in place instead of three, four, five, six different developers making their own plans for a specified geographic area, like where they might be hoping to serve when they get grant funds, and not having them coordinate. You end up with cost overruns and some areas having duplicated service with others not having any service. Lightstream told me they thought it would be closer to thirty thousand dollars, but I don't know how fresh that number was, and I would rather ask the county for too much money and return some than come asking for a second allocation. And although I can't guarantee that anyone will be willing or in the position to, if you are willing to put some money into this investment, we intend to ask the developers who are currently looking at Placenta County with grant funding if they would be willing to help to defray some of the costs since, since they would benefit. Obviously, there are, there's a limited amount of ARP money, especially compared to larger counties, and a lot of potential ways to spend it. It's possible down the road, we might look for a little bit more, depending on how the rest of it is budgeted and the needs that we see as we try to get actual implementation going forward. Right now, just having this plan is something that we think would ensure that everybody's on the same page, commissioners, my office, county highway, the community, and individual providers, to make sure that build out over two, five, seven, ten years is as cost-effective and uninvasive as possible. I did include a couple of pages from a county in Wisconsin, the executive summary of their hundred-and-forty-page broadband plan, and a couple of nice tables from La Porte County's broadband task force to show you what sort of information a plan like this would look like in the end. Got any questions for me, Wendy or Kurt? Happy to entertain them.
Was our consultant, like, I don't know how you came up with this figure, was our consultant. Aware of any other county geographically our size that this has been done, or how did this figure arrive?
The thirty, the fifty thousand?
Yeah.
Like I said, Lightstream, based on their experience, thought a reputable engineering firm would cost about thirty. I just don't know how long ago that was a reliable number. And so it seems smarter to ask for fifty and bring fifteen to twenty-five back instead of running out of money and having to come back again and ask for.
And we're not sure whether the private companies are going to kick in any at this.
We don't know.
Well, I know it's ARP money is, this is one of the areas that it can be spent on for sure. Yes, about a hundred percent commitment. I think it's something that we would give consideration to, but not saying at this point in time, fifty thousand. Is that a good answer for you or not?
It's a, it's a step closer to a final answer.
I know. Comments, guys?
And let me know if there's any, there are any specific questions, any specific information you'd like for me and the task force to follow up on to get you towards making a decision. Unless you have any questions over anything I've reported, that is all I have for you tonight.
Anything else for Nathan?
No questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We're down to other business to approve and sign. Claims payroll number twenty-six.
Okay, I've reviewed the claims and a review payroll, and I would make a motion to prove as presented.
Then moved and seconded. The other discussion?
Yeah, that's payroll twenty-six.
Yes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The minutes from our December nineteenth meeting. Presented.
I've looked at those minutes. I would make a motion to prove as presented.
Moved and seconded. The other discussion on the minutes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Point to curpsy representatives. Nathan, is that the curpsy board, that one from here, one from the council?
It is one of you and then me or somebody else.
Okay.
Council will make its, council will.
Make its own recommendation.
Okay. Well, I've served in that capacity this past year, and the meetings are in Monon, which a few miles south, so I'd be willing to do that if that's all right with.
Yeah, I would make a motion to point Chuck. Oh, and Nathan? Yeah, thank you.
You got a second on that, Mike? All in favor, or any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Bonds, approve a bond for our different departments. Bond for the treasurer, bond for the sheriff, clerk, surveyor, coroner, building inspector, public employees, blanket bond.
I would make a motion to approve all of those bonds.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Workers' comp, volunteer coverage. Get notice, parents company that we could cover volunteers for a five-hundred-dollar addition to our policy. Not really a blanket. When I got the paperwork, actually have to have these volunteers sign up to be covered. It has to be a volunteer roster. So, but for five-hundred dollars, we can get it added to the policy. Maximum amount payable under the addendum. For any one occurrence, whether individual or aggregate, cost is twenty-five thousand. Same thing. We want to add it, not question?
Are you volunteering?
Well, this all came up because of one lady that wanted to help feed the dogs at the kennel. And I don't know careers of any others.
Probably, signed.
I would assume that. It could, as long as her names gets, get on here. No, it's voucher roster, form RV dash one. Well, there might be some further questions for the insurance company, but I think, as Chris mentioned, we might be saving money if not paying the, any of the drive down.
Makes good business sense. Makes good business sense to add on. Yeah, I would make a motion to add the volunteer and insurance coverage.
Moved and seconded. Get further clarification on who goes on the sheet and who doesn't. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
An emergency declaration had this December twenty-third, and that'd have been one of Chris's more exciting days, I'm sure. Yeah, the way this helped works is that, you know, the county highway department and Chris, I have conversation back and forth. And of course, this year, we didn't have our EMA person on staff yet. So I'd like to thank Dan Passerisi. He helped considerably. We were in contact with Aaron at the state, Amy at the district level. We did not have access to the form we normally use, which Sherry would send me, and I would sign it and send it back to her, scan it and send it back so we could get it to the state, you know, to go red. So these two ladies helped us out, got us a form, and they got it to me through an email, and I took a picture of it, sent it to Dan, and he got it down to the state, where we were able to go red, so. Andy, yes, Andy, Andy Passerisi. And so it was kind of a different process, but had help from state and local people, and of course, Chris and Chris and, and Harry as well, so. Had our MA person on staff today, so last two years, this has happened in February, so looks of today it won't happen, but in February it might, so we'll be a little bit more prepared this time and move forward. I think Nathan put it on his side. It'll be smoother next time. Then the discussion on our liability insurance renewal. This came in from Kyle. We, it's about a $10,000 increase. 2022, it was 274,057. For 2023, it'll be 284,100. Think ladies in the auditor's office probably saved us 10,000 also by taking off some of our property and inland marine type of equipment. So thank, thank those ladies for doing that. So it's, I don't know, a little over 3% increase. We would need a motion.
No move.
Any other discussion on the insurance? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anything else from the board? Community comments? Okay, we thank you for attending. Meeting is adjourned.